The 1,982nd regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Today is December 4th of 2023. We're going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Kathleen McIntyre. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight's meeting will be a regular meeting, which means it is a voting meeting. The minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 13th of 2023. Ms. Nash, will you please take the role?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
What about me?
Oh, I'm sorry. President Jolly.
All right. I'm also here. Thank you. We have all members of the council here tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of November 13th of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Toy, second from Donavick. Are there any additions or comments on the minutes from the council? Seeing none, are there any additions or comments on the minutes from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside up to 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for members of the audience to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on any non-agenda items at this time?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay. Good evening, sir. Tell us your name and address, please.
Steve King, 33950 Coventry. I was at the, there was a meeting today at the library with the consulting firm and commissioners and stuff, and a lot of stuff was talked about, and I noticed the buckets, you know, in the atrium. And I was just curious, they were talking about putting a roof over the atrium, like building a roof over that, you know, because it's leaking, those windows are leaking. And I'm just wondering, I mean, they're leaking because obviously the seals have been compromised, so why can't we just reseal the windows? And I was, I'm just spitballing, why can't you have a fire, a ladder truck go over there? And, you know, throw it up there, they can get a little training in, and I'll gladly go up there with a tuba cock and save the city a lot of money, and we won't need any more buckets in the atrium. The other thing I wanted to throw out there, I'm the precinct chair at Kennedy, and we were the number one precinct as far as voter turnout this last election. So that's over 600 people. I probably talked to 550 of them. And I like to do that because you hear what's going on in the city and what citizens are concerned about. And I'll tell you, the number one thing I heard was people fed up with the deer population in this city. And I talked to so many people, said, I'm not planting another thing in my garden. And I know I personally had everything eaten this year. And so I want to suggest, you cannot discharge a firearm in a city. So I'm suggesting you do a lottery and open it up to bow hunters, raise money, cull the herd, and the money that's raised, the DNR does a sterilization program, which is very expensive. So the money you raise culling the herd, you could then start a sterilization program and get this under control, because it is out of control and someone is going to get hurt in a car deer collision. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Martin, tell us your name and address, please.
Thank you. Christopher Martin, and resident of the great state of Michigan. Just want to follow up a little bit on what Steve said. As far as the atrium leaking, there used to be X's that were marked on the floor to put the buckets, and Carl had put those down. I got along with Carl really well, and still do. And he said that knowing where those leaks were, he could hold a flashlight up and see exactly where they were. And here we are. I think we had it pre-glazed once before, sealed or whatever. Spent a lot of money on that, I believe. And instead of just focusing on where it leaks, I kind of liked the atrium myself. Now granted, at times it echoes in there and you get, you know, little Johnny who likes the echo effect and is screaming, but for the most part, I like that light coming in. And it's unfortunate, but on that type of structure, when you build something like that, at some point, you're going to have leaks. It's just the way it works. And so I think that Steve had a good idea with the ladder going over, instead of guys putting up scaffolding and, you know, all that other stuff. I think that's a quick fix to it. You don't have to do the whole thing, just where it's leaking. And so I would definitely be in favor of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anybody else for audience communication at this time? Seeing nobody else for audience communication, we will close audience communication. At this time, I will note that we have new data on item 14 and that we will have one X item at the end of today's regular meeting. I'll go to the council. Any announcements from the city council? Ms. McIntyre?
I have several, Mr. Chair. Thank you. First of all, our November 2023 retirees, first, Helene Murphy. She's a violations clerk, one, 16th District Court, 11 years of service. The second is Christian Emmert, police lieutenant, 25 years of service. We wish both of these individuals a very happy retirement. We thank them for their exceptional dedicated service to the city of Livonia. The city of Livonia, and I've worked with a lot of municipalities, has an absolutely outstanding workforce. And these are just two of the about 600 people that have served our community and continue to serve our community. So we wish them all the best. The other is that I'd like to congratulate the Livonia Symphony Orchestra on a stellar performance on Saturday evening. That was the, is today the 8th? That was the 6th, Saturday the 6th. It is the 50th anniversary year of the Livonia Symphony Or-
Today's the 4th.
Today's the 4th, sorry. It was the 2nd. I'm a little off on my dates. Anyway, on Saturday, December 2nd, the Livonia Symphony Orchestra had an outstanding holiday concert. It's the 50th year of the orchestra's existence in Livonia and the 30th anniversary of the outstanding conductor. And I can usually say his name, but I'm not going to say it because I'll butcher it, and that's not very respectful. But it was a beautiful concert. The first half, as they traditionally do at their holiday, at their holiday concert, is a performance of selections from the Nutcracker with dancers from the Angie Han School of Dance. And that was just spectacular, both the dancing and the music. And then the second half is always holiday music that represents a wide array of Christmas music, Hanukkah music, some Russian music. It was just a beautiful performance. I would hope and encourage all of our elected officials to continue to support the orchestra and the other arts. It's, not many cities of our size have a symphony orchestra. It was absolutely outstanding. So congratulations to the orchestra. Thank you to the board and all the volunteers that make those, that make those possible. It was nice to see a lot of friends there.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council? Mr. Barr?
Two things. One quick thing, this is becoming a regular refrain at council meetings, but for those trying to watch on Spectrum tonight, I'm told that the audio is not working again. Hopefully, if you're watching on closed caption, maybe some of you'll get this. You can go to YouTube and look up Livonia TV, and you can watch it live on there. So hopefully somebody from the city administration is listening and will, will look into this because this has been a regular thing for a long time. Second thing, Mr. President, I'm going to need just a few minutes because I want to address something that, to be honest, I'd rather not address tonight, but I'd rather address it tonight than in my last meeting, which is in, which is next week. So in the, in the weeks leading up to the November city election, I was very surprised to see a political mailer come out falsely accusing me of pressuring our city clerk to get illegal access to election equipment. And I've addressed this in the past over social media. I know where it comes from, but, and I would prefer, I just, you know, you're in this position and people come after you, and it kind of comes with the territory. And I just thought I'm going to ride it out. People will think what they want to think. But in the time since, even in recent weeks, I continue to get comments in the community verbally and through social media, making accusations of me about this. And so while I have this public platform, I did want to offer a little bit more detail as to what's behind that, very transparently. I do have some notes here that I'll refer to somewhat. I'll probably go back and forth. But, you know, it's one thing, I said it comes with the territory, but it's one thing to, to take a quote somebody said and take it out of context, or to criticize somebody for a position you didn't like. It's another thing to make an outright false claim, which is what this was. So residents may recall that in the weeks and months following the 2020 election, that Livonia was brought up by state officials and in the media, both locally and nationally, along with Detroit, with questions about our election processes. There was one point that our clerk's office was even subpoenaed by the state over this issue. As a selected official, and as somebody that, just as an elected official, was interested, and as well as getting a lot of questions from residents, I spent a lot of time looking in to better understand how our election processes work, and had many phone calls and in-person meetings with Clerk Nash. She was always willing to answer my questions. Conversations with her, as I recall, were always constructive. They were congenial. They were helpful. I came away from those conversations convinced, and I remain convinced, that Livonia's elections were operated with integrity. I have no doubt in my mind about that. I have taken my analysis from talking to Clerk Nash. I've got charts and graphs and everything I've put together, just so that if I was ever asked again, I could speak knowledgeably about it. I've shared that with some people that have asked. I have no doubt that Livonia's elections were run with integrity. And I've actually said that from, within these council meetings in the past, when it's come up. And on one occasion, I remember I got a text from Clerk Nash afterwards saying thank you for, for your comment. So I just want to put that issue to bed right off the bat. There was one person, however, that asked questions I could not answer. In the December of 2020, our former Senator Patrick Colbeck, who is a personal friend of mine, called me with questions not about our processes, but about the equipment. And I didn't know the answers to his questions. I'll be the first to say his, he's a true engineer. I might have a piece of paper that says I'm an engineer, but he's a true engineer. His technical expertise goes way beyond mine. And he was asking me questions that I, I didn't even know how to answer. That being said, I, like a lot of you, had read news reports about people that were looking into those things. And I didn't know the details of it, but I really didn't have an interest in getting personally involved in looking into that. And I expressed that. But about a week later, and it was on a Saturday night, somewhere around New Year's, New Year's Day, I was out in Kansas visiting family for Christmas, and I got a call from him again. It was on a weekend, and he was asking for my help in getting in touch with Clerk Nash with some level of urgency, because he had some questions about our election equipment, wanting to get some information from it. I again expressed my not interested, I didn't understand it enough to get involved. And he indicated to me that he was ready to go to national media with, with his concerns about Livonia's elections. Being somebody who was convinced that Livonia's elections were above board, not wanting to see Livonia's name dragged through the mud, I asked him to please hold off, and I said I wasn't going to give him Clerk Nash's number, but I would call Clerk Nash, and I would see what the city could and could not provide. And that's exactly what I did. And over the next couple of days, there was a series of phone calls between me, Clerk Nash, City Attorney Burnier at one point, to try to understand what information, if any, Livonia could provide in the answer to his questions. There was one conversation I recall with, and I'm not going to, I mean, this is four years ago, so, three years ago, so I'm not going to pretend to be able to quote verbatim these conversations. However, I do specifically remember, in one conversation with, with Mr. Burnier, when he had explained to me why the city could not provide the information that was being requested, I specifically remember saying to him, that's good enough for me. And I relayed this information to Mr. Colbeck. I recall him being very disappointed, but he was respectful. And that, as far as I was concerned, was the end of the matter. And then it was nearly two years later, last December, might have even been a year ago this week, that I got a call out of the blue from a Detroit news reporter asking me for comment on a document that Clerk Nash had sent to the State Attorney General about these events. And I asked the reporter to send me that document, since I didn't even know it existed before I got his phone call. And upon reading it for the first time, I have to tell you, I was surprised, I was disappointed, and I was hurt by Nash's portrayal of our, of our conversations. A few days later, after this article came out, I was walking into City Hall. Ms. Nash, I heard her calling my name. She and I ended up stepping into the council chambers. We had a very nice, respectful conversation. She apologized to me for the way that article had come out. We had a very respectful discussion about it. She affirmed my account of what had happened. I thanked her. I forgave her. I, and I asked that the record be corrected. Now, I don't know whether anything happened from that or not, but that was the end of the conversation, and I let it go. Fast forward nearly a year, and Livonia voters received a political hit piece a couple months ago, making claims about me that were unequivocally false. And so I just want to say emphatically, you can search all my public comments on social media, you can search all the video from these meetings, you will not find a single instance of me questioning the results of the 2020 election. And I definitely did not pressure our city clerk to illegally hand over election equipment. What I did do was what I always try to do when citizens ask me questions I can't immediately answer. Contact the appropriate subject matter experts, in this case, the clerk and the city attorney, and gather the information necessary to provide an informed response. And that is all that happened here. Now, I know there are some who, for political reasons, want the false narratives around the situation to live on, regardless of what I say. But for those with a sincere interest in the truth, I'm grateful for the opportunity to publicly explain what happened. And anyone who has further questions about this is welcome to contact me. My information's available on the city website. So thank you for allowing me to do that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
I just, on a different note, I'd like to just express my gratitude to our Department of Public Works and the expediency they do on our leaf pickup. We're, we're a city that provides it to our residents. We're very fortunate, that eliminates some of the burning that goes on in other cities and the pollution. And they do just a great job. I'm sure there's instances where somebody got forgotten, or you wish they would have picked them up a week earlier, a week later. But all in all, they do a fantastic job, and hats off to that department. I don't think they always get the recognition on that, that sometimes they deserve and need. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just publicly wanted to thank them, from my neighborhood anyhow, and Livonia.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Anybody else? Would you like to speak?
I, I would.
Go ahead, Ms. May.
I wanted to get my facts straight before I address this. There was mention made of the deer situation in Livonia. This was an issue that I raised a number of months ago, earlier this year. We put it into committee. We had very long discussion about it. And the action that was agreed upon by the council was that Livonia would join the Urban Deer Coalition, which was started by Oakland County, and now includes other communities outside of Oakland County. Because managing the deer population is not a city-by-city endeavor. Deer do not respect city boundaries. They don't respect county boundaries. They follow certain paths of forests and water. And there's a meeting coming up on December 14th, 2023, next Tuesday, and I will be forwarding that to the current council president, the current vice president, and the president-elect, in the hopes that we can do what we committed to doing, and that is participate in the Urban Deer Coalition, and have somebody represent the city at the meeting next Tuesday. So thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the council, we will move on with the agenda tonight. Tonight, items 1 through 11 consist of items that were studied at the November 13th study meeting and found to require no additional study and will be voted on as a single item tonight. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, items 1 through 11?
Move approval.
Support.
We have a motion to approve 1 through 11 from Mr. Barr with support from Mr. McCullough. Is there any comment from the audience on anything listed, item 1 through 11? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda, items 1 through 11 are passed. We will move on to unfinished business. We have a series of three Committee of the Whole meetings that will be read out. I will read out the first two. Item number 12 is the readout from the Committee of the Whole meeting on November 15th of 2023. There were two items discussed, and I will go through them consecutively, along with the minutes. The first item was the subject matter of petition 2022060214 submitted by Stark Road Holdings LLC. I will note that myself, Mr. Barr, Mr. Donavick, Mr. McCullough, and Mr. Morgan were present, along with city officials Nash, Burnier, and Tormina. The meeting was convened at 7:00 PM. Mr. Tormina presented an introduction of the request from the petitioner for a Class C liquor license. This request previously came to the city council and was abandoned due to unpaid taxes, which have since been paid. They are now ready to request the license, petitioner that is. Todd McIntyre of the Livonia Athletic District shared their current operations with some detail. Todd also provided that LAD's plans for the business included sharing a multi-stage approach, including having up to eight LLCs occupy the space of the former YMCA, that they were attacking, well, not attacking, they were laying out their plans with a theme of eat, play, and drink, where drinks would be available for league and adult play in the main lobby, the pickleball area of the fieldhouse, and the golf simulators. And we did discuss future usage of a license for a beer garden and an outdoor lounge, but those are not included in this plan before us tonight. Examples were given of similar businesses in the surrounding areas, such as Oakland, Oakland Yard Athletics, the DCFC Fieldhouse, and ExGolf, along with a couple others recently approved here in Livonia. An approving motion was made by Councilmember Donavick, and denying motion was made by Councilmember Morgan. At this time, do I have direction from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
I'd like to offer an approving.
Okay, we have an approving. Do we have a second for that?
I'll support.
We have support from McCullough. Is there any conversation from the council in regards to this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in favor of this petition. I think it's pretty normal for sports complexes, these types of facilities, people play different sports inside of them, for adults to enjoy an adult beverage while they're there. I know it's pretty normal to have standard, to have snacks and whatnot while you're inside of these complexes. And alcoholic beverages is fairly normal with these as well. I know there was definitely some questions amongst my councilmembers, my colleagues. I think they're all very warranteded. And I do think that if the petitioner were to violate any sorts of rules, what have you, our inspection department, along with the law department, and the Michigan Liquor Control Department would handle those appropriately. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Seeing nothing else from the council on this item, is there any audience comments on the motion to approve the request for a Class C liquor license?
Can I say something? Is that all right?
Yes, sir. You have two minutes. Please identify yourself.
Steve King. Yeah, I was the sports director at the YMCA. I think, well, first of all, it's terrible that we lost the YMCA. That, that is, that organization was responsible for, first of all, they're the largest employer of teenagers in the country, because I know I employed many to rough and coach. And secondly, I still think of it as the why, even though it's not. But I don't know, I just, we really need more places serving alcohol in the city, really? I'm just, and that's, that's actually a place where you're supposed to think about health, and you're supposed to work out, you're supposed to do all those things. And I just don't equate health and alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. If there's nothing else from the audience on this item, Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the approving motion.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. The request is approved. The second item discussed on November 15th was the subject matter of petition 2023060206 submitted by Gerald Todd Clark on behalf of ServiceMaster. Mr. Tormina presented an introduction and history of the Vassar Street site. ServiceMaster operations, well, he noted, ServiceMaster operations would offer climate-controlled outdoor storage and have new tenants for retail. The east side would be sold and developed for five single-family homes on Parkville Street. A presentation by the petitioner through their attorney was given regarding their process to this point. A rapid response meeting was held, and there had been engagement with the neighbors who have since offered their support. The petitioner did FOIA ordinance violations, which showed 71 complaints on the current site, documented and presented through the new data. The petitioner answered questions about the planned operation of ServiceMaster's business. Concerns were raised by councilmembers McCullough and Donavick regarding environmental factors of the business operations. An approving motion was made by Mr. Barr. Denying motion was made by Mr. McCullough. Do I have direction at this time?
Council President?
Mr. McCullough?
I'd like to offer a denying resolution.
Support.
We have a denying motion on the floor by Mr. McCullough with support from Ms. Toy. Is there anything from the council on this item? Council President?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think I was first. I'm dismissing the council. Toy, if she-
I thought, I thought he's a lot younger than I am. I thought perhaps he'd like to go first. I'll go first. I, I, as I look at this area, yes, there's a lot of problems with the area. There has been for a number of years. But, 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 we've got to look at the area as a whole, and with the economy changing, and with Livonia changing, particularly in some of those areas, I, I was hoping that Committee of the Whole might look at the entire area. Not that it presents itself, all those businesses and all those residents, but I know we have to focus on this building as what's before us. But it also has to be incorporated in the greater scheme of what we're doing in the city. And I don't see that happening, as we approve a massive structure and bring it into today's market. And that's admirable to a point. But I would like to, before we jump into this, to see what our plans are for that entire area. That's across from Sears Mall and that big site. And I think it just behooves the city to look and embrace the other areas as well, as we start looking at changes in some of these older areas. I appreciate it. If it waited this long, it might be able to wait till some of the new councilmembers have a shot at it as well. Maybe they have some new ideas as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. No, the petitioner, again, I think, you know, we've, we've had many meetings on this, and the presentation and the plans that they brought forward, and even working with it, has been very pleasant. The issue that I do have is Livonia Vision 21, which is our master plan, carves out that area specifically as an area of interest for the city, especially with Sears. And obviously, you have Piranis, if anybody has hockey families in here, that building is hardly being used. I think maybe 50% of it is right now. And as much as I hate seeing that building, I would much rather see something big around sparking that area that matches our Livonia Vision 21. Also, on top of that, some of the other issues that we had, I know ordinance, we had a lot of violations there. And we did, in a last meeting, bring up the fact with Jerome Hannah, who was our building official, to make sure that we're staying diligent on that property, because obviously, those are against our ordinance, and we want to make sure that that property's up to current ordinance. So that is my reason for voting no. And again, I want to thank the petitioner and everything for everything they've done on this. But that is the reason why I will not be in support. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
I will not be supporting this denial. And I, I think I've probably expressed my reasons here before, but I'll take just a couple minutes and rehash them now before we vote. You know, as Councilwoman Toy said, we should look at the entire area, and she's right, and we have. It's called Livonia Vision 21. And, and as Councilwoman, Councilwoman McCullough said, we do have a master plan for that area, and this does not fit that master plan. So that point is very well taken. And it's a point that I have struggled with a lot, not struggled with, I think it's a good point, but just as I try to decide what to do with this, even, even within the last few days, I'll be honest with you, I was very much on the fence and, and on the cusp of, of switching the way I've been talking about this and going, you know what, maybe wouldn't like a Vision 21, you know, that maybe this isn't what we do. But in subsequent conversations and trying to get a gauge as to what is the likelihood, even, even if, and I, I don't know if this is the case or not, even if, say, like the Piranis building, if it's, if it's not going to be there long term, you know, what, what are, what's the likelihood that all of that gets developed together in accordance with Vision 21? And, I mean, it's possible, but I think it's really unlikely for a number of reasons. And so when, when I look at, as much as I'd love to hold off on this and hope that a developer comes in to develop that entire area the way we envisioned, the potential cost of doing that is a blighted, a large, very blighted building for many years. And when I say many years, a decade plus. Nobody has a crystal ball, but it's very likely that that could happen. And I just, I can't do that to those residents over there. They deserve better than the problems that we've had with that blighted building. And we have someone coming in here willing to invest $10 million in that site. And it's, it's, at the end of the day, I can't say no to that. So I'll be voting no on this denial.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to start off, say thanks to petitioner and their representatives. They did a really good job, and were very amicable and nice to work with. So I do appreciate them taking-
them taking the time and effort to come before us and prepare their plans and bring us something. I'm not going to be in support of this plan, and I too, I think a lot of my colleagues would kind of struggle with it. You're looking at an eight-story tall building that has been blighted and kind of forgotten about by the owner over the decades now, and we have an opportunity to develop it, but the problem is this opportunity doesn't fit the vision that we've set forth for this piece of property. And in our master plan, it explicitly calls out this area as one of our special projects, one of the areas that we're really going to focus on, and there's been conversations with developers and whatnot over the last few years about trying to develop this series lots, but that's a whole nother discussion, and there's only so much we as a city can do. We've tried to motivate people and get projects going there, but there's only so much we can do until someone wants to do it. But when you look at that plan as a whole, as some of my colleagues have kind of touched on, there's a lot of opportunity here. And some that I look at is when you look at the master plan, it specifically calls out certain things about this, and it says appropriate land uses, including office, general retail, commercial, food service, and attached upper-story residential uses. Automotive-oriented uses such as gas stations, auto repair, and drive-through facilities are not appropriate in mixed-use development areas, which this area is. It goes on to say mixed development centers should be redeveloped, should be redeveloped into higher-density, mixed-use cores of activity addressing residents' desire for walkable neighborhoods and to create gathering spaces. The mixed development centers should provide engaging streetscapes and varied storefronts and activities, residential options that include townhomes, upper-story lofts, and apartments. Unfortunately, what we've had presented before us right now doesn't do that. Again, the petitioner's done a great job, and really do thank them for their time and efforts, but when I look at that area, five, 10, 15, 30 years down the road, I don't see a storage company being there, especially when there's so much storage around, and I know there's been, at the committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion about environmental impacts with outdoor storage, specifically storing hazardous materials and whatnot, so close to residential homes. I just can't see myself voting for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
I will not be supporting the denying resolution, and out of all the reasons given, I think that the one that is most concerning, the reasons that people are giving for the denying, the one that hits closest to home and gives me the most pause is the hazardous material issue. When I hear my colleagues talk about a giant building there, there is already a giant building there, and through the cities, and, you know, this isn't pointing fingers at anybody, but we had a committee meeting and discussion about the issue of abandoned and blighted properties. And what happens is the city essentially rewards developers for, or does not penalize or assess developers or owners of blighted properties correctly. And so, through no fault of the residents of this area, this building has become a building that it's hard to believe that a building in this condition exists in the city of Livonia in the midst of a residential area. It's not secure, we have people inside, trespassers who shouldn't be there, we have vermin. Storage may not be the ideal use, but we haven't seen this. I remember eight and a half years ago, going to look at this building when someone was interested in developing it into apartments, and that wasn't going to happen unless you were marketing to people who don't like natural light, because the window structure is very, very odd. But I think that if this fails tonight, the city has an obligation to the residents in this area to figure out what's going to happen to this building, because allowing it to continue to decay and become more dangerous inhabited by additional trespassers, more decrepit, filled with more vermin, bugs, whatever's in there, is not the right answer for the residents. Thank you.
Is there anything else from the council? Seeing none, the petitioner has asked for an opportunity to address the council. Petitioner, would you like to come to the podium, please? Good evening, sir. Counsel, tell us your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Dennis Cowan with Plunka Cooney on behalf of ServiceMaster and MySpace. First of all, we want to thank the council for its diligence. We've been at this since February with our first rapid response meeting. I want to thank Mr. Teramina and the excellent planning staff. I deal with planners all over the state, and this planning department is as best, as good as any, and you should be very proud of that. He forced us also to change the project early on, and we think for the better. And I do want to say that when we met with many of you at the beginning of this process, it was made very clear there were two milestones that you needed to see. You needed to see an independent study that showed that there was absorption for storage in this three-mile market area. We presented that at our cost and expense, independent study by a company out of Georgia that does this nationally. The second was neighborhood support. We had over 200 people sign a petition in favor of this, because they do want to have their neighborhood improved, especially Mrs. Murray, who couldn't be here tonight, and she regrets it very much, because she has been a stalwart supporter of this project. She's also the one who was told by an appraiser recently that her appraisal got knocked down $10,000 because of this building. And I think that should be a concern for all of you, when that starts to have that kind of economic effect on residents. But we met that burden. In fact, I think somebody commented they'd never had 10 residents in favor of any project in the city, at least commercial project. I'm sure lots of others they've been in favor of. So we feel we've met those two burdens, as well as all the requirements that are put forth in your ordinance regarding the special zoning that we've requested, and so we would urge you to please vote to deny this resolution and to vote in favor of the zoning we are requesting and to allow us to move forward and remove this blight from your city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Is there anybody else from the audience here who'd like to speak on this item?
I've been holding in the mic.
Okay, if there's none, I will, at this time, ask Ms. Nash to call the roll. We'll note here that the motion on the floor is a denying motion, so an aye would be in favor of denial. A no would be against a denial. So sometimes these things get tricky. Ms. Nash?
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donovanik?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
No. The ayes have it. The item is denied, and this concludes the readout of this Committee of the Whole meeting. I'll note that this item and the previous item will be removed and out of committee, and that the meeting was adjourned at 7:57 PM. We will move on to item number 13 on our agenda here tonight. That was a committee meeting of November 20th of 2023. Councilmembers present at that time were myself, Mr. Barr, Mr. Donovanik, Mr. McCullough, Ms. McIntyre, and Mr. Morgan, and city officials Sheil, Nash, Neville, Slater, Hannah, and Tormina. We had three items discussed on November 20th, the first of which was Council Resolution CR 130-23, the subject matter of vacant and abandoned fee schedule, abandoned building fee schedule, excuse me. The meeting was convened at 7:00 PM. The subject matter was introduced by Councilmember McCullough. Mr. Hannah, the inspection director, explained the process and procedures of the ordinance enforcement department for vacant and abandoned buildings. Councilmember McIntyre asked about different types of taxation for vacant and abandoned buildings. Councilmember Donovanik asked about the enforcement process. A motion was made by Mr. McCullough for a report and recommendation from both the law and ordinance departments about costs expended and for comparables from other communities regarding vacant and abandoned buildings. Mr. Slater, our finance director, explained the fees that are put on property taxes when unpaid and their subsequent actions. He indicated that in most cases, the city recoups the amount expended during the process, unless buildings are not sold for the amount owed or have lesser, have higher secured interest, excuse me. The committee recommended at this time that the ordinance and law departments both provide a report and recommendation for costs expended and for comparables from other communities regarding vacant and abandoned buildings. That was the motion of Mr. McCullough. Mr. McCullough, would you like to offer that at this time?
I would.
Is there support?
Support, just a good discussion.
Okay, we have support from Toy. Is there any discussion on the council, from the council, on that motion?
Council President.
Mr. McCullough?
Just to touch base, so we were just, the item before us, again, we're talking about blight, and if you're going around the city, you see these vacant and abandoned structures. Right now, the maximum that any building owner would have to pay is $500. So obviously, there is some need to up that and kind of get with the times, should we say. We're not in a business to try to work against business owners, but at the same time, we want to make sure that these properties are being maintained. So we're looking forward. Hopefully, this passes, and then we get some ideas from the subject matter experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything from the audience in regards to this request from the council for the information indicated? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanik?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That motion is passed, and we will look for that information from the administration. Item number two on November 20th was Council Resolution 221-23, the subject matter of city user fees. This matter was introduced by Mr. Donovanik. Councilmember Barr explained that he did not like that any fees could be charged without council approval. Councilmember McIntyre was in agreement. Council President Jolly, myself, I explained that the Parks and Recreation Commission had fee-setting ability. Mr. Slater, the finance director, explained the extent of the fees within the city, and Mr. Barr offered a motion for a report and recommendation to include all fees currently charged by the city and whether they require council approval or not. Mr. Barr, would you like to offer that motion at this time?
I would, Mr. Chair.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Support from McIntyre. Any comment from the council, Mr. Barr?
Yeah, you did a nice job providing the headline for it. The fundamental principle that I'm working with here is that I think any time that a city is charging residents for a service that is exclusively offered by the city, that that's something that should require council approval. It's already the case for taxes, or for, let's put it this way, it's already the case for us to approve something going on the ballot for residents to approve for taxes, and there are a few fees that we approve now, but there's a lot of smaller fees in the city that, some of which we do, some of which we don't. And while, as a practical matter, this may not often seem like a big deal, I do think there's opportunity there for the city without the people's representatives approving it to find new revenue sources by choosing to unilaterally raise fees. We saw one attempt this summer to do that. And so, I would have loved, you know, in my time on council here, I'm term limited, I'm going to be gone here pretty soon, I would have loved to have been able to do something with this before I was off of council. But it was clear to me in that meeting that, while that's the fundamental principle that I believe in, and I think we should do something here, we need to have a better handle on what all of the fees are that this would affect. And so, this resolution that I've offered here is just to ask the administration to put together that report of what all the fees are that the city charges, what the approval structures are for each, and so what will end up being the next council can make an informed decision on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Donovanik.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in favor of this. This has been a topic that's been discussed over the years. There was some note during the committee meeting that a past council had had committee meetings on this exact topic as well. So I imagine through the law department and the appropriate departments' research, they'll find that there has been discussion about this, because ultimately, city council are the people's body, and we're the ones that get the questions by the residents when they're paying this fee or that fee. So I understand there's definitely discussions about the reality, if it's practical or not for council to approve different fees, and maybe it is, but maybe it isn't. I think we need to have that discussion further, because again, ultimately, when the residents are being charged different fees for various reasons throughout the city, council's the one that gets those discussions, get those questions, and I think it's important that there be oversight there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to this request for information?
Mr. Chair, can I make one more comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Barr.
Thanks. Just, in the last meeting, President Jolly actually pointed out that we, a couple years ago, had dealt with the matter of some user fees through Parks and Rec, and that council had actually basically deferred this type of authority to the administration. And I went back and looked, and he was exactly right. Ironically, I actually expressed the same concern about this then, I went back and watched it, that I did now, but for some reason, and I'm not even sure I understand fully why now, I ended up voting to do that. I would think differently about it now. But I just want to point out that, I want to give her some credit. Councilwoman Toy actually pretty passionately made that very point in that meeting, that this is council's responsibility, we shouldn't be deferring this to the administration. So she had it right then, I didn't. We have a chance now to hopefully fix this going forward, so, thanks.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, Mr. Barr, I think delineated exactly correctly at our committee meeting, and that is the difference between fees for which there are competitive alternatives beyond the city, and those would be things like what the recreation department charges, what we charge for some user fees, because most of those, you can find similar offerings in the private marketplace or even from other public entities. But the fees which the city imposes, which only the city can impose because they're city services, those are really, increasing those is really just another tax on residents. And we're very clear on the fact that taxes have to be taken to, tax increases beyond what's allowable through the millage have to be taken to voters, and as the representative of all the voters and all the residents in the city, I think it's very, very important that council retain the ability to control and approve and review any fees that are proposed for which there is no alternative, again, because the services are provided only by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any audience comments on this request by the council for information from the administration? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanik?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. So I'll note that item one from this meeting and item two will both remain in the committee for further review. Item three from November 20th is Council Resolution 288-23, the subject matter of Petition 2023-070806 submitted by Leo Sovi Building Company LLC. A plan overview was presented by Mr. Tormina, our planning and economic director, economic development director, excuse me. An explanation was given of the property zoning history that has changed from RUF to R2 and then to N2, and that there was a previous plan that was abandoned to develop these houses that are being talked about under a previous developer. There were 11 conforming N2 lots originally proposed, but the site plan has since changed per the petitioner's request to show 10 lots. Mr. Doyle, a resident, spoke on behalf of the existing area neighbors, along with Mr. Abbott, a neighbor of his. Mr. Eda, a petitioner, the petitioner, was present for any questions and provided additional insight and considerations for neighbor concerns. Councilmember Barr offered an approving motion of the revised plan that included 10 lots. It was recommended by the council that the law department prepare an approving resolution for the revised site plans. Mr. Barr, you offered that motion. Would you like to offer?
I'll offer the approving, yes.
Support.
We have support from Mr. Morgan. Is there any comment from the council elaborating on my?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I know I'm talking a lot tonight, so I'll try to keep this brief, and I've said this before. I feel the residents' pain with those trees coming down and these homes potentially being built there, depending on how this fog goes tonight. But as I've explained in the past, it is land that is zoned for residential. A previous council changed that zoning to residential, I think 10 or 15 years ago, and, you know, when you have a property owner that comes in and buys residential property for the purpose of building residential homes, it's really not fair for us to keep him from doing so. My concern with this, in spite of all that, originally was the number of lots that they were cramming in there. The petitioner, on his own accord, heard that, adjusted the plan to lower the density of lots to more closely match what's across the street with the existing homes, and did what I asked for, and so therefore, I don't see any reason that I can't support this. So that's the reason for my support. So, that's the reason for my support.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may go to law, Mr. Burnier, as we explore a lot of these different petitions tonight, there's some very deep-seated feelings from the Law Department and within the structure of the laws that this city is governed by and these ordinances are governed by. Does this meet all our specifications for residential then, on this particular with the 10 homes that this petitioner is proposing?
It does. It fits the ordinance. The ordinance for that zoning category allows for that. I know council wished that they could have increased the size of the lots, but the ordinance allows for a certain width and a certain depth, and it meets it, and as long as the development itself meets all other ordinances, setbacks, size requirements, then it's allowed.
If I may too, Mr. Chair, we don't have anything that requires, when we go into an area that's heavily wooded like this, et cetera, anything about how many trees should be left, or anything like that, do we?
We do not have any, we do not have a tree ordinance that accounts for private property. Our tree ordinance in Livonia only deals with public properties, rights of ways, parks, things like that, property that's owned by the city and not by private individuals.
Correct, okay, all right. Yeah, as we explore these, it's, we have to operate within the law.
Yes.
You know, obviously, through my career, I was a lawmaker, but I certainly didn't execute the laws that we made a lot of times, and we have to follow the laws of the city, otherwise, we end up, not that we're scared of courts, Mr. Burnier, but there are times where you just can't throw in the towel on some things. But this being one, I empathize with the residents a great deal, because I have a lot of wildlife that enters into my backyard, because I have a creek about a block away. And it's nice to see rabbits still go, and pheasants and things like that, even the deer that come in the yard are kind of unique, and my dog loves them too. So, I just, I have a problem with it when we start interrupting a lot of our wooded lands, but this falls into the law, and I have to err on that side, and thank you to our city attorney and others that help us interpret those, so I appreciate it, thank you.
If there's nothing else from the council, is there anything from the audience in regards to this petition, Item 3, in the committee meeting tonight? Okay, good evening, gentlemen. You each have three minutes, please tell me your name and address.
I am Paul Abbott.
Oh, two minutes, I mean, two minutes.
Two, okay, 20226 Sunset. I mean, I'm not sure there's anything else I can add. You know, the weird thing is, is that I'm a teacher, and I'm like intimidated by this right now, so. I feel like a lot of the things that we've addressed and brought up haven't really been answered. Merriman Fargo, that's right there, is a school bus route as well. My concern is the construction traffic that's going to happen. Fargo's a school bus route. Our basement's, mine anyway, has flooded at least twice. I've had to replace my sump pump three times, just because of the flooding that happens, and we feel these additional houses are just going to make it worse. Which, again, hasn't been addressed. We've asked, but it hasn't been addressed. How is this going to be fixed, through the two drains that are on either side of the street? The houses have now moved to single-car garages, which I feel is going to lower our property value, which means more cars parking on the street, leaving little room for public services now, garbage, leaf pickup. The city hardly, and no offense, this is something we'll address at another time, but the city has come down our street twice to plow it in the 10 years that I've been there. And so, additional traffic there is just going to make it worse. How the roads will be treated after all of this has happened has still not been addressed. The soft shale, the construction, everything, it has not been, how's it going to be fixed? And I don't understand how somebody, sorry.
I'm sorry, we have to keep you.
Sure, I understand.
Good evening, sir, tell me your name and address, please.
Michael Doyle, 20210 Sunset Street. I'm going to pick up where he left off, there's too many unknowns. One of the members here on the council told me that we would do like a side road and whatnot, but it doesn't solve where my house is, which is on the corner. We don't have any, there's no plans, we don't know when they're going to start, there's this and that. And I understand, like, they can't get supplies and this and that, but there's nothing in place, and our block, I would say, is unique, because we do have 10 kids under 5. And, I, and this is the first thing that we brought up with the planning committee, and Saturday was a very scary day for me, because there was an eight-point buck, he was a big boy, who stepped out on 6 Mile, at 6 Mile between Newburgh and Farmington, and it probably wrecked our car. And I had my three kids in the car, and if we take away more and more areas, because I know this is not the only plan that's going to get rid of trees, there is more. And where are they going to go? And I sat there for about 30 seconds thinking that I could get one of my kids injured. And I hate to say that this worked, that this happened at the best time, because it didn't, because I don't want my kids to be harmed, but at the same time, you guys were talking about deer. The corner, even if we do a road over on the, over on the other side, it's still gonna, they're still going to have to come down our road, and I just don't think, and we've had so many talks about this, and we don't have any answers yet. So, I'm sorry, I get emotional about this, just because I want the kids on our block to be safe. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
I'm going to speak to the audience for comments right now, just, is there anybody else from the audience that'd like to speak on this matter? Come on up, ma'am, tell me your name, please.
Colleen Badgero, 17415 Sunset Street. I just want to say, it sounds like you're missing a tree ordinance, and like nature conservation ordinances that would strategically preserve these spaces that are so special to all of us. We all know that this is a huge asset to our city and our communities and our families, and it sounds like there's some big gaps that are preventing you all from maybe making choices you'd like to make for the future because of legal ramifications, just because development knocks on the door, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience who'd like to address this item? Seeing none, audience comment on this is closed, we'll go to Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of like what Vice President Toy mentioned with our Law Department, there is no tree ordinance for private property. There is tree ordinance for public property. There are certain rules and regulations that you have to follow when you are removing trees on public property. However, private property, just like my backyard, just like your backyard, if you want to take down trees in your yard, you have the right to do that, as you should. You pay property taxes on it, you own that land, if you want to remove trees on that land, you should be allowed to do so, with the exception of wetland and floodplain and those various environmental factors. So long as your property is not in that sort of protected space, you should be allowed to tear down trees on your own property, you own them, it's your right to do so. Two, the residents' concerns definitely are warranted, and I know a number of times we did discuss a few of these different things, one being stormwater detention. The petitioner has presented plans to add stormwater detention along the back and the side of the property. Through the Engineering Department, the engineers will discuss the proper calculations and whatnot to make sure that that stormwater is retained on their property. Very standard and with all new development, there's a lot of problems with some of our old homes, like my basement and whatnot, but those homes are built in the 60s, 70s, early 2000s, they didn't have the stringent requirements that our engineers rightfully put on new development, so I don't foresee any stormwater detention issues. These garages are two-car garages, from the plans that are presented, not one-car garages. And then also, this property is zoned for this exact usage. It's a neighborhood, if it was apartments or condos or something to that effect, I would not be in favor. But they are single-family homes, very common in neighborhoods, having single-family homes, so I'm complete support of it. I think it makes sense, if it was some sort of commercial development, or again, apartments or condos, whatnot, I don't think it would be harmonious with the neighborhood. But since it meets the zoning and all the applicable laws, I'll be in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I'd like to ask that perhaps, I guess, direct it towards the administration, to have someone go out, and/or maybe DPW, address the plowing issue that the gentleman spoke of, just to get them some answers, and also, already, the water situation, I don't know, the drains or whatever, Todd's good at that, I would guess, right, Todd? Just to give them a peace of mind, because these guys are our experts in the city, and I think our residents rely on us to do something about those things, and it had been mentioned before, so if we could direct that, Mr. President, that might be helpful to our residents on this, because they're getting these changes as well, it sounds like, and that might be helpful for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Zalinsik and Mr. Varga both heard your comments here and made notes.
Thank you.
There being nothing else from the council or the audience, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote. The vote on the table is to approve the plan for 10 lots.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McInt, McCullough.
No.
President Jolly.
Aye. The plan is approved in accordance with the motion made. I'll note that this committee, the whole meeting on November 20th, was adjourned at 8:09 PM, and that this item will be out of committee. Item number 14 is next, I will step aside to avoid a potential professional conflict on that item, and I'll hand the gavel to Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council, this is a committee of the whole meeting that was held on November 27th here in the auditorium. Many of you were here and participated in that. The report, the subject matter, I should say, was Petition 0222120102, submitted by the Basilica of St. Mary's requesting to rezonate parts of the properties at 18100 Merriman Road and 30600 Brookview Drive, located on the east side of Merriman Road, between Mayville Drive and 7 Mile, in the northwest quarter of Section 11, from PL, public lands to N2 neighborhood. So, that is the legal description thereof, and also, the notes from the committee of the whole, the committee met at 7 o'clock. Mr. Brandon Grisco was the attorney that represented the Basilica of St. Mary's, spoke on the environmental issues and concerns, stating the church hired EAGLE, which is a state organization, or department, to evaluate the site. Mr. Richardson, representative from EAGLE, provided new data for the review. Points were made during the meeting. EAGLE reported no concerns about the wetlands or floodplain. The concept plan from the church shows they will be 198 through 200 feet away. The Wetland Authority may need approval in the future from our planning commission. A question was raised regarding any tax collection on this site. Various residents provided their concerns regarding the petition. Councilmember McIntyre offered an approving, Councilmember McCullough offered a denying. The meeting was adjourned at 8:06, and it was instructed, the Law Department, to prepare an approving and a denying resolution, and that's what we have before us this evening. So, this item is being reported on a committee of the whole for this evening's agenda. Your pleasure, council. Yes?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Thank you. Do I have support on that, approving resolution?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Barr? Is there a discussion from the council at this time? Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I just, will reiterate what I talked about in the committee meeting, and that is, what we are talking about tonight is a rezoning petition for a property that is owned by the Basilica to be developed into a school and multipurpose building. We are not talking about rezoning any other property for any other use, we are not talking about approving a specific building, we are talking about a rezoning, a first read, or sending to law a request to prepare the language for a first reading. And the typical way the council does this, although, like Mr. Barr, I will soon be leaving the council, and I don't know whether they will continue with this process and protocol, is a first reading is offered, and again, rezonings require, like ordinance changes, a first and second reading. A first reading with rezoning is given, and it has been the practice of the council, not to give the second reading and vote on the rezoning until the site plan has been approved. Now, I don't know if the future council will continue with that same practice, but all we are talking about tonight is the rezoning of the very specific piece of land that would house the proposed school and multipurpose building. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, yes, Councilwoman Donavick.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So, there's been two committee meetings on this, we've had a lot of deliberation on it, as we should. It's a big project, and I understand there's neighbors with concerns, and there's people that are at the building there also have concerns. A lot of great information, I do appreciate the residents and the emails and the people that are for and against this. Like I've said in the past, I stopped replying because there's so many emails for or against it, you start to lose track of them all, so I do hear you, and I do appreciate that input. What I thought was very tongue-in-the-last meeting was from our planning staff that talked about, this is private land now, it was sold by two parties, and now it is currently zoned PL, which is public land, which is not an appropriate zoning designation for this property, since it's no longer public, it's privately owned. And our planning staff kind of discussed and told us about the fact that there's not many, very little, if any, properties in the city that are zoned PL that are not owned by public entities, whether that be the City of Detroit, the City of Livonia, Wayne County, the federal government, and so on, those are all public entities. And this property no longer is owned by a public entity, so it should be rezoned as such. Now, there's still a lot of discussions and a lot of questions about the actual site plan itself, the building itself, and I understand it can be a little frustrating at times, because some of the questions that the residents and whatnot have are very good questions, but we can't dive into those just yet, because we're not at that phase yet. So, regardless of what happens this evening, well, if it's approved, and the Law Department will draft their appropriate documents, then it will be sent to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission will get a deep dive into some of these questions, the height of the building, the exterior facades, the parking lot makeup, lights, lights is a big topic, understandably so. So, those are those nitty-gritty details that I want to get into, and I know a lot of the residents want to get into. So, I'm hoping that this passes tonight, so we can get into those details, and you know what, if the petitioner presents plans that we as a council ultimately don't like, then we can deny it then, and the project won't go forward. But it's my belief that we're on sketchy ground here when there's privately-owned land that is zoned public land. The whole purpose of that classification is it for it to be zoned PL, because it's owned by a public entity and no longer is. So, I think it is important that we rezon this to an appropriate use, so that it has that appropriate designation, because at the end of the day, we as a government are saying, telling the private property owner that it can or cannot develop on the land, because it needs appropriate zoning, but then we tell them, they can't get that zoning, so you're almost land-locking these people from doing anything on their private property. So, regardless of the plan that we do or do not approve one day, I think it's incumbent upon us that we at least rezon it, so that it kind of meets the standards of private property. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, anyone else from the council before I go to the audience?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I was trying to find the answer here, without having to ask, but it might be more efficient this way, through the chair to Mark Tormina. This doesn't change my view on it, but I just want to clarify, the part that we're zoning, I think is only the portion related to the proposed school, correct? Or is, okay, I just wanted to make sure I clarified that. Thanks.
Certainly. Anyone else? No? Okay, I'm going to go to the audience. Any of you that do have comments, and particularly new information, we've been through this many times, but you're right, obviously, to speak to the council tonight. If you want to line up to the left or to the right, we'd be happy to take your comments, or if the petitioner would like to address the council at this time, please, we welcome your comments. If not, I see no one coming forward? Yes? Okay. Okay, I do see the petitioner, did you want to go first, sir, or did you want? Okay, go right ahead, go right ahead, he's giving you the floor. You have two minutes, please. Your name and address.
Amelia Bilkate, 31716 Curtis Road. I mentioned a lot of topics last meeting, and I forwarded, or sent you an email, so you should have gotten that information. should have gotten that information from that meeting. I did do some additional research. I looked at other Montessori schools in Livonia, and they are not zoned as N2s, which is what we are referring to zoning this school. They are zoned as NM3s. And then, from what I looked, a N2 is permitted by right as a single and second family dwellings. Additional uses are conditional. So I'm wondering why this zoning would be like that and not the NM3? And if it was the NM3, there's more kinds of causes that come into that play. Another thing that I didn't talk about was, and this might be getting a little bit ahead of myself, is noise pollution. And it's okay if I don't talk about it since I don't have time, but there's also more wetland. There, it's very important to look at it and not just rely on, oh, Eagle said it's okay. There's more data from National Wetlands and Inventory and the United States databases, which states that the Park Bainbridge, right next to it, is a protected park of the United States, and the pavement of the proposed zone and whatever is proposed to be built there would negatively affect that area, which is protected. And since I'm running out of time and don't have anything, can't say much more.
Anything you have, you can always submit over here to our clerk, and they will put it on the record. Okay? Thank you for coming in tonight. Yes? Good evening, sir. Your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Counsel. Brandon Grisco with the Law from Afoslon and Grisco, 41700 Six Mile Road, attorney for the petitioner, the Basilica of St. Mary's. I appreciate all the time and attention that the council has given this matter. We've had a number of public meetings. There was a long Planning Commission meeting. We've had a number of public city council meetings as well. Mr. Tarmina's done an excellent job. Mr. Bernier's weighed in at times as well, and we appreciate the support of the city administration and the city council on this project. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this portion of the project, and we're just asking the city council to essentially agree with the Planning Commission to approve the project. We've taken a number of extra steps with this project that we wouldn't necessarily take at this stage with a similar development, including getting Eagle involved quite early, doing site planning already, which has been provided to the city as well, again, ahead of schedule, ahead of where this normally would take place in the process. And we've done all this to try and give counsel all the information it needs to make an informed decision here. And so having reviewed the ordinance criteria for rezoning, St. Mary's feels very strongly that it's complied with the ordinance criteria, such that a rezoning would be appropriate, and especially for some of the reasons that Mr. Donavick indicated in his comments tonight concerning the fact that without a rezoning, it seems unlikely that there's ever going to be the ability for my client to use its private property because of the nature of the way the city interprets the public lands zoning. So we appreciate the council's support tonight, and I'm here for any questions, of course, and I look forward to continued discussions on this project. Thank you.
Let me see if the council... Counsel, do you have any questions for the petitioner at this time? Comment? I just have a couple of comments. Eagle, you paid for that study, is that correct, the church?
That's correct. We actually had to contact Eagle and kind of talk them into coming out to do a site visit. They wanted to just do a paper review, but we wanted them to actually come out and walk the site with us, which they did.
And the site plan's been submitted to the city already, did I hear you say?
Not in the sense of like an application for a Planning Commission hearing or anything like that, but it has been provided to the city, and it was provided to Eagle as well.
You know, I'm old enough to remember on this council what we used to do. Some of you may, I don't think Paul was here then, maybe Mark, you weren't either, but we used to do a site plan approval and a rezon at the same time, if the plans were in. And, but that was...
We would support that.
Well, that was days in the past when members were on for some length of time and there wasn't turbulence. So perhaps it was good times, perhaps it was bad. I think we've developed a darn good city, and we want to continue to do that. So if there's no other comments, and sir, if there's nobody from the council, then I'm going to go back to the audience.
Thank you.
If nobody else has any, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay. You're going to have to line up because I can't guess that you're going to jump out of your seat. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Toy, members of the council. Number one, Eagle does not provide the permitting for the site. We asked them at the meeting with Eagle, that comes from Wayne County or local. So all this stuff about hiring Eagle to come out, that doesn't have anything to do with it. They offer oversight if there's some complaints about environmental issues, they'll come out and check it out. It does not come from Eagle. The other thing is that if someone is petitioning you to rezon something into a zoning, it's upon you to understand if what they are proposing fits in with the zoning, or if it fits in not with the zoning, with a waiver of the zoning. This project doesn't fit either. N2 is neighborhood 2. It used to be a residential designation, and it's still residential. It's mostly used for larger lots, for homes, not a 35,000-square-foot building. And we've talked before, this is not just a school. The petitioner said it's going to be a family center, it's going to be a family and youth center, it's going to be a family unit center, and now a family community center. So these are questions that weren't answered in the last meeting. You talked about taking a deep dive into this. There was no deep dive into these matters. So I'm asking the council to put forth a motion to send this back to a committee where we can get some really good answers on this. And other information has come up concerning the property and the sale of the property a number of years ago. This is public land that was sold. This is the citizens', the taxpayers' land that was sold, and there might be state of Michigan oversight on that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Did you have a... Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember? Did you... Oh, no, go for the audience.
Hi. My name is Robert Hannity. I'm the parish council chairman for the Basilica. I want to show my appreciation for the last meeting because this council educated me on your process. And you reiterated it today. Your process will likely be that the actual final vote on the zoning will be at the site planning process. The details that have been raised, the concerns that have been raised, we have tried to address all of those at the stage that we're at. My understanding is the site planning process is when we get into those details. A denial today doesn't even allow us to get into those details. Yes, we provided a site plan. That site plan may need to be tweaked. We want to work with the council, we want to work with the neighborhood, but a denial doesn't let us even move forward. This council has said several times that at the next phase, it can be denied, and then the zoning doesn't change. So this vote is simply just to move forward, and we're asking to move forward. We would like to get into the site plan issues, and we'd like to work with the city. Let us move forward, and then you can make a decision as to whether our plans meet the city's requirements, the city's objectives, but we're not even there yet. We're simply asking to move forward so that we can submit a site plan officially, and then we can get into the details about environmental, about noise, about lighting, about everything. So I would urge the council to please approve it so that we can move forward and provide the deep dive details that you request. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hello, thank you. Kevin Skyless, 30528 Janine Street, Livonia. I'm a resident of one of the impacted neighborhoods, and I just wanted to voice my opposition to the proposed rezoning. I certainly hope that you'll hear the concerns of Livonia residents who live nearby and take that into consideration and deny the proposal. And I certainly hope that, you know, you'll hear me tonight and that you'll hear everyone who's spoken and emailed and contacted you about this, you know, all of those residents, taxpayers, and voters from Livonia who oppose this. And one other point that I want to make is that if this many people oppose this who live nearby, it doesn't mean that the process should proceed. It means that the process should be denied right now, because the people who live nearby don't want this rezoning and the subsequent development to happen. So I really do hope that you'll listen to us, take our concerns into consideration, and vote to deny the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go right ahead, councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just piggybacking on basically everything, and again, this is another item that we've spent a lot of time on and in a lot of meetings. I appreciate everybody's comment. I took some notes. So this is, my biggest concern has always been the waterways and the wetlands and the woodlands. I understand that Eagle did come out, but I don't have anything. I just, all I have is a guy that came out and said everything was good. That's all I have to go on to make this decision. I've heard about Bryant School being on that site. That's apples to oranges. That's Bryant School was part of the entire park. It had its setbacks. It was measured out fine on that site. 2012 was the last time that that waterway had any testing done. From what I'm learning, I'm assuming, and I don't even want to make assumptions, I'd like to see what it is right now before rendering a decision to pair with Eagle. The last thing I've always brought up, and we keep hearing 150 or 200 feet from the waterway, there's a thing called limits of construction. When you guys do a site plan, basically, that's when you see silt fence or the orange construction fencing. This is normal construction. That is the limits of construction. Now, when we do a site plan, and another person that came up brought up the fact that, hey, it goes through the site plan process, it does. It does, but it only goes for whatever is in that set construction, not the surrounding areas. It's not going to require testing of the creek to find out if any of this is going to pollute it further or not. What's going to happen is, maybe two years down the road, Eagle's going to come in and say, hey, we're having issues, and then it's going to be basically a reaction. All I've asked for, you know, I appreciate the petitioner, but everything that I've asked for, I don't have. Now, if Eagle had a written report that could have said, hey, we did testing, we did analysis, I would have something to go on, but all I have is, they went out and everything's good. Well, listen, we're in a position to represent 93,000 people, and I can't go off that, making that decision. And for that reason, I am going to be voting no until I have such information in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, a couple of things. First and foremost, and we often hear, I mean, I've been up here eight years now, and every development except one, which is actually one of the ones we dealt with tonight, that finally was the first anomaly in my entire time on council, every single development the neighbors are opposed to, every single one. So, and I'm not offering that in any kind of snarky way, I'm offering that for some perspective, because we often hear, how can you vote for this when all the neighbors around it are against it? I will tell you, all you neighbors that are here tonight about this property, there were neighbors that opposed the neighborhood you live in, okay? It's just the nature of the beast. I understand the concerns. We do hear them. Disagreement does not mean we did not hear. I take, I read every email, I listen to every voicemail, as I think it was Councilman Donavick, somebody made a comment about how many of these we've gotten, and maybe that was on a previous item, but it's certainly true of this one. I know I haven't responded to everything, but I have read every single one of them. We do hear you, okay? I just want to offer, that one counter perspective, you know, part of the reason we have a representative form of government is to have representatives that are one layer removed from the emotion of the people that live right there. That's not to diminish the concerns of the people. It's just part of the reason our government is set up the way it is, so that we can try to look at this objectively as possible. So we do hear you, but it's one thing that we hear. We have to take everything into account. The second thing I want to say is, you know, someone made a comment, even one of my colleagues up here made a reference to this as Bryant Park, or I see some of you have shirts that say Bryant Field. Well, I recognize that this is a green field right now. From a city planning perspective, this was never intended to be a park. It was a school. This is not a park, this is vacant land. And when you look at, when we talk about how these neighborhoods are served with green space, I would argue, these neighborhoods are served by parks more so than just about every neighborhood in the city. You've got, I think, the largest park in the city in Rotary Park, less than a half mile away. You've got Sunset Park, you've got Beverly Park. From a city planning perspective, this was not intended to be green space. And just off the top of my head, you know, this is obviously Livonia Public Schools' own property previously, and the remainder of the property, I believe, still is. Off the top of my head, I can think of four other Livonia Public Schools' own properties that have been sold during my time on council. Every single one of them has been sold not to be a park, but to be a neighborhood. If Livonia Public Schools ever decides to sell the remainder of this land, I can almost guarantee it will be sold for homes to be put in there. This land is going to get developed at some point. And so we just have to ask ourselves if this is appropriate, and we're talking about zoning this to allow for a school on a property where there previously was a school. That's the rationale for, again, similar to what I said earlier, I understand, as somebody that grew up in a neighborhood that backed up to an open field that we used to play baseball in and saw the homes built there, I understand the frustration with seeing open space developed. I really do. But that's the, among many other things I could talk about, those are the reasons why our job is to look at what makes sense for the community as a whole, and that's why I think the zoning makes sense. I will also say, last point, is our practice, and I won't, again, I won't be here when this final decision is made, I guess that's why I want to say so much tonight, but the our practice is to hold off zoning until a site plan is approved. I could see a rationale, as was stated by somebody earlier tonight, why this site maybe is worthy of rezoning even before that. I'm not saying that we should do that, I'm just saying, just to reinforce my point from earlier, this was never intended outside of being used for a school by city planners to be public land, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. To our city planner, Mr. Tarmina, zoning can be confusing, and within a zoning classification, there can be multiple uses for that zoning. Can you tell us, I think two residents brought it up, about the school portion of this or what have you, being involved in the N2, which is neighborhood 2? Can you explain what permitted uses are allowed within the N2 zoning?
Well, it is true that the N2 classification primarily serves for single-family residential construction. We have to also recognize other land uses that are appropriate for a single-family classification, including educational uses and religious institutions and their ancillary uses. Bear in mind that that N2 classification of those properties considers the fact that, number one, oftentimes, those uses are appropriately cited within single-family districts or single-family developed areas. And secondly, should that zoning change, the N2 classification recognizes future residential construction in an area that is suited for residential construction, so.
So what you're saying, the reason why the petitioner is proposing N2 and not NM3 or C1, et cetera, et cetera, is because the way our ordinance states is if they want to do some sort of educational or religious facility, N2 is the appropriate zoning for that?
It is, and there are other zoning classifications that allow educational uses and religious institutions. N2 is appropriate in this context, given the fact that a portion of the property is already zoned N2, as well as the surrounding area.
And we haven't heard much from the smartest man in the room, is our city engineer, Todd Zalinsik. Todd, you know, a lot of has been mentioned, and this was some of my original concerns, and naturally, it still is a concern, being so close to waterway, but from my understanding, Eagle is the permitting authority, and if they see some sort of environment's impact, they're the ones that will come out and say you have to seek a permit and kind of meet all these certain recommendations, requirements, rather.
Again, depends on where the stormwater gets conveyed to, but is there existing system there? And obviously, Jeremy Richardson's with Eagle, looked at this location and confirmed that there is no issue. Then again, the stormwater is going to be through either Wayne County, which is, if it goes up to Merriman Road, through the city, through our local convey system of our drains that we own, and then obviously, if they discharge out to this area, then obviously Eagle may have a say in that, which sounds like they've already provided that information to the petitioner.
And through the site plan petition, Mr. Zalinsik, before, let's just say hypothetically, city council ultimately approves the site plan, before they're even allowed to start construction, the... the city engineering staff, Wayne County engineering staff, you're the ones that can authorize the commencement of construction. And if you have some sort of concerns with stormwater retention on the site, what have you, you won't let them start building.
Correct. Obviously, we have the ability for the soil erosion, sedimentation control. Or if they want to go Wayne County, obviously, we're faster. And then the second thing is, obviously, we want to make sure things are met, all the permits are met, before construction begins. So we want to make sure everything's in place, construction can commence, and obviously, things can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Certainly, certainly. Yes, and we're preparing this resolution to send it to law is what it'll be. Again, it's got to go through those hoops. Yes, for the ordinance. Yes, go right ahead. Your name and address for the record, Ms.?
Thanks, my name is Caitlin Bellwitz. I live at 30528 Janine Street. I was within, like, relatively close proximity to the proposed rezoning area. And I have a question for the council. And just to kind of preface this, I've been in the mortgage industry for almost 10 years now, and part of my job is reviewing appraisal reports. And I've seen appraisal reports where there have been multicultural centers, school buildings, kind of mixed-use facilities that have negatively impacted the value of homes in that neighborhood. And I just, I'm kind of putting on the spot, but has there been any research done regarding the impact on the marketability of the homes in the neighborhood? Just because I'm just not sure that this is something that I would be okay with as a resident, seeing the value of my home decline because of a building like this potentially being built within close proximity.
To my knowledge, no, unless somebody else has it.
I do think that would be something worth looking into more.
Houses sell pretty quick in Livonia, that's all I can tell you. Yeah.
Not all of them. Not the one across the street from my house, but that's neither here nor there. Yeah. And it's not a bad neighborhood right now, so there's that. And also, I am concerned to hear that there is no Eagle report that was provided or any type of documentation stating there was no concerns, if I'm understanding that correctly, from Councilman McCullough. Are we really just going off of, like, word of mouth? Like, it just, that's unsettling to me. I don't know. That's how I interpreted that statement, and if I misinterpreted, I apologize. But shouldn't there be some type of documentation that's being reviewed? I don't know.
The church paid for that documentation, whatever, if they've released it to the department heads and...
Yeah, that's my question, like, was it reviewed?
What it was, we'd have to check that out for you, Ms.? Okay.
Yeah, because I just, that would make me feel more comfortable as a resident, and just seems like the right thing to do.
I see a representative from the church getting up right now. He might have that answer for you.
Okay, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you for your questions. Yes, sir, your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Salem Saman, 20020 Gary Lane. I am one of the members in charge of this project. We did have Eagle come out. They spent over 45 minutes in the rain walking the property. We asked if they can give us a report. They said that it takes about two weeks to issue a letter, which means that this coming week, we should have a letter from Eagle. And what they said was, we are not going to require any kind of permit because they don't see any problems with the site.
Thank you very much.
So we will have a letter to the city soon.
Okay, appreciate that. Questions, yes? Councilman Morgan.
Yes, I'd just like to address it a little bit. I mean, we did get numerous emails from parishioners, from the surrounding community. And I also attended the Eagle presentation that the citizens provided. And they brought Eagle in, and over at the library. And after listening to the presentation, I didn't see anything negative that they had to say regarding this project. There was, they had a lot of things, they talked a lot about the drain. They talked about things blocking the drain. But a project like this, they didn't, it didn't sound in any form or fashion like this would be a problem for the Terre Brucee Creek. So, you know, this is something we have to move forward with. I believe we have to move forward with and see the plans before any decisions are made. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to say, anyone in the audience that is here for the 8 o'clock meeting, we are running behind at the moment, if you haven't noticed. Alrighty. Hi.
Hi, I'm Leanne Bedrow. I'll keep it brief, because my emails are quite long, and I appreciate everyone that read them. I think your decision's already made, but I'm going to piggyback on what I said earlier. You're missing some ordinances in the city that protect natural spaces. And I don't think endless development is inevitable. I think we can change course, and we can protect these spaces that are important to us as a species. And I'm thinking long-term, so I hope you consider that. And just at least have the most careful oversight of this project. And remember that land can be used for things other than buildings, like garden space, pavilions, places to gather. You know, it's only profit-making buildings is not the only appropriate use for land that's owned by an entity. And just because an entity bought public land does not necessarily mean you, as a council, have to change the zoning to allow that type of building to be erected. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate those suggestions, but we have to deal with what petitioners bring before us. So that, what's before us, as you've all heard many times. Okay, if there's no one else, you're the last person, sir.
Okay. Mike Burgess, 30825 Mayville. I've spoke here several times. Mr. Bear, I liked what you said about that field and sporting. After Bryant Elementary School was tore down, it turned out to be a soccer field for a lot of kids and a lot of very volunteer parents. Okay, and another question I got to ask. How many times do we table this whole situation until it's just a moot point?
What, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying on a...
Well, this issue has been tabled so many times.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm unaware of that, unless my colleagues are aware of that.
Okay, well, I mean, it's been tabled. We'll vote on it, or we'll hear information about it.
We've sent for a lot of information, sir, on this, because a lot of people had questions. So if that's what you're referring to, yes, it would committee the whole, et cetera.
Yeah, but how many times is it going to be tabled?
Inevitably. That's the democracy of government, sir.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, as long as it's postponed so many times...
We're going to vote on it tonight, sir.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to a vote. And Madam Clerk, are you ready? Counsel, go right ahead.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
No.
Vice President Jau, Vice President Toy.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all. I'm going to turn the gavel back over to our President Jim Jau.
Okay, if you are here and leaving, please leave quickly and be quiet. So we will now go to unfinished business, item number 15, Proposed Amendment to the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as Amended from the Department of Law for Petition 2023090105 submitted by Maddox Construction LLC, requesting to rezone the property at 37739 Seven Mile Road, located on the south side of Seven Mile Road between Blue Skies and Glengarry in the northeast quarter of Section 7. From N2 neighborhood to C1 local business, a public hearing was held on November 8th of 2023. Do I have direction from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
I'll offer first reading.
We have a first reading being offered by Mr. Barr. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to item 15?
Hello.
Yes, sir.
Justin DiNatale, petitioner for 377397 Mile. Just wanted to offer some comments on our intentions for the property. So we talked a lot about blight tonight. This property has blighted this beautiful area of Livonia for quite a long time, I believe over a decade now. There's fencing that needs to be torn down and replaced. There's a pool there with garbage in it. The residence has no roof currently. So all these things I intend to fix and want to fix. I actually grew up in the neighborhood south of this property. Born and raised in Livonia, lived during my life. We have a growing business currently in Livonia, and we want to expand. When people hear that this office space is going to be used for construction, I just don't want them to get the wrong impression. Our shop activities are going to remain on Amryne in an industrial area. This space is going to be used simply for sales and marketing and our executives, five to seven employees. There will be no commercial vehicles kept on this property. It's going to be quiet and office-related activities. And I also just wanted to ask if you guys had any questions for me on our intentions with the property.
You know, you gave a good presentation last time, and I think we're all moving in that direction.
Okay, great.
To support it, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
If there's no other comment from the audience in regards to that item, we will move on to item number 16. Item 16 is a roll call. It's a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law. Title 12, Chapter 16, dealing with parks and playgrounds, Section 010, to change the name of Park Site AA to reflect being named after the Livonia Lions Club and Devonair Wood Park to John T. Dufour Park. A first reading was provided by Councilmember Brandon McCullough on November 13th of 2023 to reflect these changes. Can I have a second reading?
Council President, I'll give a second read.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Is there any comment from the council? I see none. Is there any comment from the audience? Mr. Martin, state your name and address, please.
Oh, thank you, Christopher Martin in Michigan. I'm in favor of this. Several meetings ago, there was a young man that stood over at that podium, was in favor of it, looked a lot like Paul over there. But what, I have no problem with naming parks after people. And a friend of mine, who worked for the city for 45 years, said that the guy was great that you're going to name the park after. So I'm in favor of that. I'm not in favor of naming buildings after people. And I was very clear on that years ago with the naming of our courthouse. But in this particular case, I think it's appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
I was here when John Dufour was here, and I got to tell you, he was quite an individual that made our Parks and Rec program what it is today. And even furthermore, I think Ranky took lessons from him. McNamara took lessons from him. He just, he was an outstanding individual, and this just doesn't do enough to honor his name. He, and you're shaking your head too. I know, being involved in hockey and such, you would know John. And he did a fantastic job. And if this is the least we can do for someone, whether it's a park, a building, or a bathroom, he deserves it. Thanks.
Council President.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing, Mr. McCullough.
Just really fast, you know, it's funny, because I grew up with Jake and Mikey that are sitting in the back, because they pick the last seats in the far back. We should almost have them come up and say some more stuff, just to get it on video. But, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, I know administrations here too, is a lot of public are going to see it, and they're going to go, who is this? And I think it's important that, you know, and this is just a recommendation to administration, is maybe, you know, outlining exactly, once we do this, on the amazing person he really was. And hearing, basically, shaping the city of parks the way they are. I think that this goes to Mr. Martin. This is the least we could do. And it's an honor to have him on that, you know, have his name on the park. So kudos to you guys. Never thought I'd see you at a council meeting, but this was neat. So we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, is there anybody in the audience on item 16? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jau.
Aye. 16 is approved. Onto 17, that's a roll call for the proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to Title 12, Chapter 18, Naming of Public Places and Buildings. Section 020, to change the name of the indoor auditorium to Jack, at the Jackie Kirksey Recreation Center, to Ronald R. Ranky Aquatic Center. First reading was given by Mr. Morgan on November 13th of 2023. Mr. Morgan.
I'd like to offer a second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is there any comment from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
None other than an outstanding individual as well, and served under John Dufour in the years that I was here and furthermore, went forward. In fact, Ron taught us how to have fun at Spree. No, I'm teasing, but it's true. He did a great job there as well.
It was like Old English there. Went forth and furthermore. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to say anything on this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on 17. Went forth.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jau.
Aye, 17 passes. We're on to 18. 18 is receive and file. It is the administrative response to Council Resolution 214-23 from the Office of the Mayor regarding the subject matter of removing dead deer from private residential property. There's no action required on this item. Is there any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to 19. That is a request to release development bonds from the Engineering Division for Heritage Square Condominium, located on the east side of Newburg, south of Six Mile, in the northwest quarter of Section 17, citing Council Resolution 403-18. Can I have a motion, please?
Some support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Mr. Zalinsik, can you give us a brief overview of this?
Just a housekeeping issue, releasing 27,000, or 25,750, still withholding $10,000 for as-built. They'll come back to you when it's complete, back to City Council.
Thank you, sir. Any comment from the council? What about the audience? Seeing neither. Ms. Nash, take the vote on 19.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jau.
Aye. 19 is approved. Onto 20 is a request to approve final cost information and to authorize additional appropriations and expenditures from engineering for the 2022 sidewalk program, Contract 22G, setting Council Resolution 118-22. Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by Toy. Mr. Zalinsik.
Just look at Attachment A, shows the authorized amount was 706, due 2787. We actually, the final cost was 678, 41076. Has a breakdown of all the costs associated with each individual item. Just looking to close the project out, and obviously, assessments will, bills will go out in the coming year, 2024, for the remaining portions for 22 sidewalk program.
Thank you, sir. Any comment from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote on 20, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jau.
Aye. 20 is approved. 21 is a request to approve final cost information and to authorize additional appropriations and expenditures from engineering for the 2023 sidewalk program, Contract 23G, Council Resolution 71-23. Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by McCullough. Mr. Zalinsik.
Again, Attachment A shows the details of the cost. Authorized amount was 975,113.92. The actual final cost was 955,705.23, and appropriated to the existing accounts. And just looking to close out the project.
and appropriated to the existing accounts. And just looking to close out the project. And then obviously, the tax, or the assessments will be sent out to the appropriate folks in March of two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all the work on these projects.
Appreciate it.
Is there any council comments? Any audience comments? Seeing none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on twenty-one, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Twenty-one is approved. Twenty-two is the acceptance of grant of easement from law for a twelve-inch water main secured without monetary consideration from Alitha Apartments for public utility easement in connection with the water main construction constructed at one four nine three one Farmington Road in the northeast quarter of section twenty-one, parcel ID forty-six zero eight one nine nine zero zero one eight zero zero one. Can I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by McCullough. Any comment from the council?
Mr. Chair, can you just confirm that parcel ID number for it? No, I'm just kidding.
One last hurrah.
Mr. Zalinsik, we have a pretty clear explanation here. Any additional explanation required?
Just wanted to clarify, it's a twelve-foot wide easement for the water main, for public water main, so just.
Twelve foot, twelve inches. That's why I didn't study engineering.
Twelve-foot wide easement, thank you.
Yeah. That's a good point there. All right. Anybody from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on twenty-two, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Twenty-two is approved. Twenty-three is a request to approve a settlement from law for, well, regarding the Middle Belt Plymouth Venture LLC versus the City of Livonia in the U.S. District Court. That's case number two colon two-two dash ZV dash one two seven three four. Can I have a motion, please?
I will offer an appro, sorry. I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Approving by McIntyre, support by Barr. Any comment from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are always unfortunate circumstances when the city has to file or settle a lawsuit, especially over a developmental project like this. Wish it never came to this point, but ultimately, I'll be in support of it, because I, in good conscience, cannot cost residents of our city millions and millions of dollars in a lawsuit that we might not be victorious in. So unfortunately, I'll be in support of this lawsuit and get this behind us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
We, we hear a lot from residents on development projects, we heard tonight, about, well, all these residents don't want this. And as my colleagues have mentioned, all the information that most of us get from residents, I can't speak for everyone, just for some of my colleagues, because I know how they operate, we read every email, every text, take every phone call we can. And development is not by popular vote of residents. We follow, when there's rezoning and it affects people within a certain area, they're all notified by law. We are very scrupulous about requirements for rezoning and take all the factors into consideration. However, when we make decisions based on outcry by residents and do not fully consider the legal implications of our decisions, we end up in situations like this. And again, I'm done with council at the end of the year, but I hope going forward that those who are on council will continue to do what I think most of us do, and that's listen and be concerned. And certainly, residents have an important voice. Those who are affected by any sort of development or any decision have an important, have an important voice. But we're a representative form of government, not making decisions based on popular vote or how many signatures or letters we receive. And when we do that, and we don't consider all the other factors, we end up not in a good place. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I would just like to ask the city attorney to maybe give us a little bit of background on how we got here. And for the residents that are watching this, I think it would be very important for us to know where we started and where we ended up here and why this is a, this is something that's important for the city.
Sure. Now, I'll be happy to give a brief synopsis of where we were and where we are today. We obviously had a closed committee meeting where we discussed pending litigation, and the matters I discussed in that stay in the closed committee of the whole. So they, I'll just give you, I'll give you a brief thumbnail of where we are and why we, why the Law Department is making this recommendation. Obviously, this was a long process in the development process to develop the property into a apartment complex. It came in front of the Planning Commission, it came in front of council, there were many, many meetings on it. The proposal was to be rezoned in order to accommodate the apartment building as designed by the developer. The council voted against the rezoning, and on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the developer filed a lawsuit in federal court against the City of Livonia alleging certain things. I think there were about two hundred separate paragraphs in the lawsuit, and they alleged several constitutional issues, three different due process claims, procedural substantive due process, a constitutional takings claim, basically taking their property without due process or allowing them to develop it, claim that we denied them equal protection on that. As part of the lawsuit, their demands were to develop it as they wanted to develop it. And I think that's important to note, to develop it just to rezone it and allow them to develop it as they wanted to develop it. They were also asking, I believe it was for ten million dollars in damages, given the fact that the merchandise and property has gone up, interest rates have gone up, and loss of revenue over the period of time that this would take. We went through a, we answered the lawsuit, we went through a discovery process where we supplied information to them, they supplied information to us. We had court conferences with the federal district court judges, we spoke with experts on it, and we talked a great deal, Mr. Termina, myself, the Law Department, about what, how, what is best in the interests of the entire city of Livonia. We were able to negotiate with the developer what we think is a greatly improved project from the original project. It does not call for a rezoning. It's the same zoning. It's a C-two zoning, which it currently is, with a planned residential development. And as part of the consent judgment, there is a detailed site plan that they must follow, which is a greatly improved from, a plan from the original, in my opinion, and I believe Mr. Termina is also. We asked the developer to, basically, to develop the live, and they came pretty close to what the live was developed. We looked at everything, and we believe in our judgment, it's in the best interest of the city as a whole to settle this lawsuit with consent judgment and allow it to be developed, that which we negotiated. If that, does that answer the questions, Councilman?
It does, sir. Thank you very much.
Anything else from the council? Ms. Toy?
You know, as you serve on these decision-making bodies, as has been said, you have to look at the entire topic from top, bottom, and all the way around, and knowing that at any point, if you got enough money, they will come back and sue you, or they will challenge you in court. Even if this body, or the Planning Commission, which had happened many times, denied this petitioner. They did come back and change some of those plans, which we appreciated. But now they've also added a car wash to this site, which is very disturbing to me, since we're already putting two down Plymouth Road. The development of that property isn't a good use of that property for a car wash on it, and it almost smacks of, because we denied it several times almost. This, this has a long history, but yet, our Law Department has told us that we need to settle this case, or it is going to be very, very expensive. Most residents in most areas cannot afford these types of attorneys, as this organization has done many years ago. Take the annexation piece, take other pieces that they've tried to develop. They have a long history of hiring expensive attorneys and expensive lobbyists to make their case, which they have every right to do. But this city should not be held in any respect and fearful of that. And I will coincide with the Law Department, much to my chagrin. I know a lot of those neighbors down there. We fought on these, on Axellorama, on several of these cases over the years, as it pertained to Wonderland, as times changed. While they've done a lot of good things in this community, this is one I am not real jumping up and down about. But I will follow the law.
Ms. McIntyre?
I'd just like to be clear here, and Mr. Bernier, feel free to contradict me. The Law Department does not tell the council what to do.
Absolutely not.
The Law Department brings to the council their recommendation to minimize risk, additional further risk and harm and monetary damages to the city. The Law Department is not the decision-maker, the City Council is the decision-maker. And that's why we're taking this vote tonight. It's not law telling us what to do. It's law's thoughtful, experienced, very knowledgeable assessment of what actions the council, they recommend the council take in order to prevent further damage to the city. We do not, we do not act on the edicts or the directive of the Law Department. And the Law Department has never, ever suggested that they tell us what to do. They bring it to us, and they leave us to make the decisions and take the vote.
Absolutely. I wish there were times I could issue the edicts to council, but I'm not given that power. We make our recommendation after looking at the law, looking at the facts, looking at, we weigh risk, is what we do. We weigh risk. We look at, is what is the benefit to go into a lawsuit, to challenging it, to proceeding to trial? What are the damages? What is the possibility if we do that and we lose? So we weigh risk and we make the best decisions we can, weighing the risks in this and looking at the benefits to the city as a whole, as opposed to the damages as a city as a whole, the possibility. We believe that it's in the city's best interest, and we ask, it's my recommendation, it's the Law Department's, and I'll take it personally, it's my recommendation that the City Council adopt this consent agreement in the best interests of the entire city of Livonia.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
Let's go to Donavick first, because he hasn't spoken on this yet. I don't.
Right. Thank you, Mr. President. To our city attorney, Mr. Bernier, I know that there are certain things we have to be careful about, because it is a lawsuit settlement, and there are certain client, attorney-client privileged information right now. It is my hope that after this process is completed, that the mayor's office and administration in general can kind of give some info into what this project will be. That, I think that'd be helpful to the residents, because it is confusing, because this was originally turned down, and now there's a lawsuit that we have to vote on. With that being said, that ten million dollars that the city would have to pay, that's not insured money, that comes right from the general fund.
That's correct. There's, we're insured by the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Company. There are certain things we are covered for, there are certain things we are not covered for. If we were to proceed to a trial and lose, we would not be covered, and any damages would be paid for out of the city's general fund, which means it would come from somewhere else. The risk, of course, is that you would have to pay that. One of the risks in any constitutional violation lawsuit is, in addition to the actual damages that they suffer, should they win, they would also be awarded actual attorney fees. So in addition to whatever damages, there could potentially be actual attorney fees. Again, that's if they win. And what I'm, what I'm suggesting to council is, I'm not saying, I, it is a, in some respects, a business decision, it's a risk management decision, weighing what is in the best interest and what the, what the potential risks are and what the potential damages are. The potential damage to the city is that a federal judge tells them, rezone it, and they can build whatever they want, and pay them a lot of money. That's, that's, that's the, that's the worst-case scenario, and that's what we're trying to avoid right now. And it's why we negotiated what we believe is a much improved project.
Thank you, Mr. Bernier, and that is why I will be in support of this lawsuit settlement, because, again, I'm not going to take money out of the budget of our police officers, of our firefighters, of our DPW, and the listed departments of Parks and Rec, and so on and so forth. If anybody's been following the budget process, there's not ten million dollars laying around in our general fund. That money will come out of the different various departments' budgets, and we don't have any money to give away right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
That's great. And no one wants that to happen, obviously. But I also am concerned that as we make decisions as an elected body, and we have the residents to answer to, not disrespecting the Law Department whatsoever. I get what the Law Department does, I get all that. I'm just saying, this council had denied it quite a few times, as did Planning. That is part of our jobs, part of our, you all go out there and want their votes when we all go out there. So all I'm saying is, we've now got a car wash on the site, too. That doesn't thrill me. I'm just voicing my opinions as one councilperson, and I appreciate law doing what they've done. I am going to cooperate and vote for this, much to my chagrin. But the law's the law, and I will follow the law, and I will follow the suggestions. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Our Livonia Vision twenty-one and the zoning, we've obviously updated the whole, the whole thing over the last couple of years. And one of the big things that strikes out with me, and I've said it time and time again in meetings, is promote harmony in the surrounding area. And while this plan, again, even the live or whatever building plans that are, that are being proposed, I just don't, I don't see it conforming to that site. Now, if the Wonderland site, the Wonderland Mall was still there and it was being torn down, and we were talking about a master plan that you could incorporate, I got, I'm well more open to that. However, we've got a destination shopping plaza, right? You have Walmart, you have Target. And for that reason, I appreciate our Law Department, but I just, I don't feel good with this. Going forward, I just, I think it sets a bad precedent. It was denied by council multiple times, it was divided by planning, and that's where I'm standing. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address?
Yeah, same Steve King as I was a little, few minutes ago. I agree. Sets a horrible precedent. All right, so let me get this straight. You tell the developer, no, we don't want this, we don't want your apartments, no, go away, no, we don't want this, no, we don't want this. All right, well, we'll hire some attorneys and we'll sue you. You guys are being bullied. And you know how you deal with bullies? You punch them in the nose. Say, bring it on, see you in court. It sets a terrible precedent. And then they throw a car wash in to rub your nose in it, and you're going to sit there and take that? Shame on you. Shame on you.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go to the audience real quick, if you don't mind. Good evening, ma'am. Tell me your name and address, please.
Jeanne Sullivan, two nine eight four four Orange Line, Livonia. Money talks, and we don't have the money. Oh, sorry. I wish all those people that left here would have stayed for this, because it's very, very alarming that this was voted down so many times. And now it's a complete reversal. Everything that we fought so hard for, everything that we agreed that was not good for Livonia, that this wasn't a fit for Livonia twenty-one, they bought us, right? Pretty much. Shostak owns so much of Livonia already. I just want to say, on my drive here, I go past, because I live right behind Wonderland Village, and what do I see? Shostak, Four Lees. Shostak, Four Lees. Shostak, Four Lees. And that's where we're going.
Good evening, ma'am. Tell me your name, please, and your address.
Cheryl Luke, two nine eight six Fort Orange Line. And I want to thank all of you guys for listening to us, why we all tried very hard to keep this out of our backyards. Point being, what happens when construction starts and all the dirt and all the debris starts coming back in our, to our homes? How are we going to acknowledge any of the cleaning or anything else back there? And keeping people out of our backyards, along with us not having to call our Livonia Police Department. Is there going to be their own security there also? I think there should be a few more steps involved with his thinking, along with our thinking also, before anything's totally approved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else from the audience? Last call. Seeing none, audience comment is closed. We'll go to Mr. Barr.
Just one important fact that I think is important for people to understand here. The same Livonia Vision twenty-one that's been hearkened to several times tonight as what we should be following is what put us in this position. It's Livonia Vision twenty-one that called for this. And so even some of my colleagues up here that are talking about their, their frustration with this, it's that Vision twenty-one that put us here. It's not the first time in the last even two months that I've had a little bit of buyer's remorse with aspects of Vision twenty-one. And it's starting to sound like a broken record here, but it's a reality. I think the next council would behoove themselves to reconsider some of those things, so that we don't get in a situation like this again. So, thanks.
If there's nothing else- If there's nothing else from the council, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye. Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember McCullough.
No.
President Jolly.
No. The item passes, the settlement is approved. At this time, can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Support.
Okay, suspend the rules to here, X-one. Can I have a vote?
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Council, Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The rules are suspended. We will go to X-one. That is a request for authorization to sell city-owned scattered site housing property acquired from the Federal Community Development Block Grant Program, from the Livonia Housing Commission, for the home located at three-five-five-four-six, Orange Lawn, to Amy Spicer, for a sale price of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, five hundred dollars. Can I have a motion, please?
Approving.
Support.
Motion to approve by Toy, support by McCullough. Is there any comment from the council? Mr. Ingalls? Any, anything further need to be said here?
This was purchased through Wayne County Tax Foreclosure back in two thousand and two. We had an appraisal, City Council authorized the sale back in September. We now have a buyer. We had several people give us proposals, and we actually got five hundred dollars more than the appraised value.
Great. Good job on these things, Mike, to you and your people. Brilliant. If there's nothing from the audience, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The item is approved, and that concludes the agenda for this evening. Is there any closing comments from the audience?
Motion to adjourn.
Any closing comments from the council?
Support.
We have a motion by Toy to adjourn, support by McCullough. I think we can safely show seven to adjourn. It is nine-twelve. We'll reconvene at nine-twenty for the study meeting. Thank you.